Anyone wishing to address the commission tonight? Mr. Calderon, please.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Gary Calderon and I hope you all have the letter and code enforcement form that should be attached to it. I was briefly speaking with Scott Berry here before we started and my intention this evening is not to come here and criticize nor complain and I hope Scott you understand that.
Absolutely.
I mean, we've known each other for years, we've worked together very well, I have all the respect for you, that's not my intent, it's that I want the commission to understand this particular property, of course, is next to me, that's why I'm here. I do understand that you have hundreds of these properties, I mean, I've lived in Ratone all my life, I've known all of you, we know it's an issue. This property is abandoned, it's out of state owners, the back end of the house is falling in, the windows are broke. Mr. Berry has mowed it out of courtesy to me, I've mowed it for years, there's an issue of trespassing, it's like Scott said, he'd get me out of jail if I got caught, so, but anyway, it's a habitual, continuous problem every single year and I have lived on that lot for 35 years. And it's about a 600 square foot dwelling, I know the legalities of, you know, tearing down a house, it was red tagged, I think, a year and a half ago. It is just a complete eyesore, we've got snakes, skunks, vermin, cats, and of course, all my neighbor kids just love to play there because I would too if I was a kid, but it's dangerous. And Mr. Burke, I'm in no way here to complain about him, he's done a, you know, he had some of the, I think Scott calls it the prisoner, Scott, or whatever that program is that you use.
Community service.
Community service and they've come and they've mowed it once so far this year and, but the weeds are as tall as my three-foot chain link fence, the trees are growing, I mean, Chinese, you can barely see the house, which in a way is kind of good, but I just want you to understand what they're going through to try to help me as a citizen, that's why I'm here. I'm not here to beat anybody up, that's not my style, I appreciate Scott, through the years he has believed me, he has weaved out on this, Scott, what, four or five times every year?
Yes, sir.
And so has Mr. Burke and they've been both very, 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 very good and professional about it, I mean, I've never approached Mr. Berry that he hasn't been. But I feel you need to know what myself as a citizen, I take pride in my property, I keep it very clean, but it's devaluing my property and, you know, we all want people to come to Ratone because I have a lot of faith and hope in Ratone and I do want it to prosper, but with this kind of stuff next to me, it's kind of bad, I mean, you know, in those 35 years I've probably mowed it 200 times, but, you know, I can't, I can't mow something that's three feet tall and these trees and, you know, it's just a complete eyesore and that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention, to see if there's something that you can do to help these gentlemen, to get this lady to take care of her property. There's two ladies involved, one lives in Arizona and one lives in Colorado. And, you know, I tried to get some of my neighbors to come, but not everybody was vaccinated with a phonograph needle like me, so they're scared, you know? And I told them, there's nothing to be afraid about, just come and tell the commissioners what we put up with every day, you know? So I'm here on their behalf because they're a little bit timid to come up here, but I just like to know what your feelings on this are, I mean, is the ordinance broke or what does Scott need to do his job better or Mr. Burke, because obviously this isn't working? I mean, last year I think we cleaned it, Scott, four times?
Yes.
Yeah, four times. The lady never responds to Mr. Burke's letters, nothing, nothing at all. So, and it's very frustrating, you know, to live next, I'm sure none of you, like I was telling Scott, none of us want to live next to that, you know? So I'm open to suggestions from you, I don't know what to do anymore.
Well, Mr. Berry, sorry, Gary.
That's okay.
Mr. Calderon, you know, we are aware of many properties like this in Ratone.
Sure.
And there's not probably a week that goes by that we're not.
Made aware of it.
Made aware of it.
Sure.
We are currently looking at our ordinances, how we can beef these things up, get them to where we can work with them and we are not, this has not fallen on deaf ears, believe me, I would like, love to bring a D-10 from the mine when we had them and just bulldoze most of them down, but that's impossible.
I understand that fully, I mean, you know, we just can't tear someone's home down, I understand.
Absolute, so we are aware of it, don't think that we're not trying to address it because we are and we have, we have limited resources.
Sure, understood.
And I'm not trying to bail out on that.
No, I understand.
But that's, that's the direction we're trying to head, trying to get another ordinance here that has a little more meat, we've had discussions and I can assure you, we're going to continue to work on it and try to alleviate some problems. I have the same issue in my neighborhood, I have a neighbor that does not take care of their yard and it is very frustrating, it is, but to let you know, it's not fallen on deaf ears and we will work towards coming up with some kind of solution we can all work with. I think a lot of it though is people just don't take pride in their property anymore and they're lazy.
Well, and especially when they don't live in our community, you know, I mean, if there was somebody living there, I think it wouldn't really be that much of an issue because you couldn't live in all that, I mean.
Well, I'd have to disagree with you.
Oh, really?
In my neighborhood.
Oh, my lord.
There's a, in my neighborhood is up by the hospital, there's a.
Right, I know where you live.
House there now that, they've lived there for four months without any utilities.
Oh, my God.
They, they must haul it off or whatever, they have nothing, they do not take care of their yard, they do not take care of anything, you can't do anything to them, I mean legally.
No, you know, Scott and I have sat there in his office and talked about this, you know, till we're probably blue in the face, right Scott? I mean.
Well, our latest one that we, that we did have and we were ready to act on it and we said, okay, we'll get that thing, like Neil said, torn down, well then all of a sudden, an heir, they don't live in town either, an heir from third cousin twice removed said, wait a minute, so there it put us back another long time.
Understood.
So, it is, but like Neil said, we've looked at several other type of ordinances that we could, and if we could, if we can get some more teeth into it, then it would, it would help, but it's like you said, they don't have a bit of pride.
Well, no, and you know, and it's not only frustrating for, you know, I'm sure, I mean, I'm not sure, I know, Scott doesn't want to see me in his office, you know, talking about this property every year because I can just imagine.
I do, Gary.
Yeah, I can just imagine, he sees me and he says, oh God, he's coming on that 412 grant, I go in to see Anthony Burke and he looks down and he says, Mr. Calderon, I was at training and I just haven't, I understand that, you know, I'm not here to criticize, I'm just like, help me, please, you know, it's, I gotta look at that and if any of you have seen my place, you would understand, it drives me crazy.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I, if I can help out and be on a committee, anything that I can do to offer help, just let me know, but, you know, I, I just want, you know, something's got to be done with the trees and the weeds and, you know, it's just, it's awful, you know?
Well, Mayor, Commissioner, and if I could, not to interrupt.
No, no, not at all, please.
But, you know, give you my perspective on it, I would say, first of all, what the mayor said is not falling on deaf ears, I would go as far as to say, this is the biggest challenge that Ratone as a, as a community faces is the, is the dilapidated properties, the lack of attention to private property, the vacant buildings, the, you know, the conditions that we've heard here and, you know, it's kind of a signal of a community that's gone through the economic downturn that Ratone has and, you know, in my time here and your time, you know that the turnaround of economic development is extremely challenging and it takes a while, it doesn't happen quickly, I've got, I think we got reason to be optimistic, but, you know, it just takes persistent work over some time, but, you know, like this property, we're not going to clean it up or get very far with community service, we're, you know, putting a Band-Aid on a, on a broken bone by doing that, really, we utilize that to the extent that we can, we utilize city crews, it's never really going to be adequate and, you know, we, we need a strategy, but we have developed a strategy and there's work to be done there, it's, it's, there's not an easy fix to it, but I would just say, I think it's a, it's a top priority for the community, certainly for the city of Ratone, it's top priority, it's going to take work, it's going to take money and, you know, it's, it's something that I think me and the staff were dedicated to, to just keep working on, but we realize the scope of this challenge.
Well, Mayor Sagata mentioned the funding and you know how, for a long time we've been way down, we're finally climbing out, also the lack of personnel, we don't have a, I happen to know the one that's in the code enforcement in Rio Rancho, has 11 people.
Sure.
You know, they have unlimited funds, they have all this, but in our community we have to prioritize a lot of the stuff that.
And they've got a large city budget too.
Oh, yeah.
It makes sense, I mean, you know, I fully understand that.
But be assured that we're not, you're not falling on deaf ears.
Well, that, that makes me feel good to hear that and it's like I said, I came here with all good intentions, not to, you know, it's frustrating, I know.
And we could try to, you know, take care of some property, it's just a short-term deal and it's not addressing the bigger issue that we have in town.
Right.
So, we really need to look at the big picture here for Ratone and so, that's something we talk about a lot.
But I will agree with you and Scott that it was a, it is putting a Band-Aid on it, I mean, you know, we get there, we mow it and then the trees are now so tall you'd have to use chainsaws and, you know, everything else and you'd have to use a power mower, you know, weed eater and, I mean, you know, if it was just a vacant lot and you could mow it, it'd be done, but, you know, it's just.
Understood.
You know, but that's why I'm here, I'm encouraged to hear that it is, you know, you gotta understand from a citizen's standpoint, you know, you kind of feel like, God, nobody cares, you know? But I know you do.
We do.
But I just needed to put it in front of you.
Absolutely.
So you can understand.
And that's what we're here for.
Sure.
You want to sit down with any of us, anytime, you know, feel free to call.
Oh, I have, I have sat down with Scott many times and by all means, I've talked to you guys on other issues, we've always been able to get things resolved and like I said, if you need a citizen to be on a committee or anything, I would be more than happy to help you, if I could.
Take that into consideration.
And I appreciate you listening to me this evening and Scott, as always, I appreciate what you do.
Thanks, Gary.
I know as being in banking for 40 years, we hear a lot of complaints, but we don't hear a lot of praise, but, and I appreciate everything you all do, so I'm encouraged by your, by your spokesman.
You can be assured, we're going to keep working on it.
Thank you.
This is one of our top priorities, Gary, for the city.
I really appreciate that, thank you all.
I would just say that I, you know, I talked to the mayor of another town at the municipal league and we kind of, I mean, it's, it's a problem a lot of people have, maybe not to our extent, but he said, I really would like, hopefully you can send me your ordinance when you get it because he said, we implemented a similar ordinance and it got struck down in court and it's going to be challenged, you know, we're dealing with private property rights on this and, you know, he said, I'd really be interested to see what you got because our ordinance was challenged and didn't make, didn't test in court, so it's, it's just, you know, to put that into perspective that it's, it's, it's not an easy ordinance to write or bring to you or, or an issue to address, but certainly a big issue for Ratone.
Absolutely.
And, you know, a piece of property may, may mean nothing, but when you try to take it away, it becomes a palace.
All of a sudden, yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calderon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Kayler.
Well, I'm here to get a couple of things cleared up that's in my mind, or try to get cleared up. I was told that the city commission knew that this one party was making their living and he's a good old boy and that sort of thing, on down here on Second Street with all of the appliance junk out there in the middle of the lot or in front of his building that he is renting. I can't understand why the commission and the city manager let that happen, even though he's the only show in town supposedly, he's got room behind that building to put those old parts until he's ready to haul them off. He just didn't seem to want to do it, the owner of the building made an offer to him that they would fence it in so nobody could get in there, that isn't what he wanted, he wants, he's just too lazy, is what it bounced to, to take those parts of old refrigerators, stove, around the corner to the back. So, I know that the commission is aware of it, I've talked to Scott about it and so, one of the commissioners approached me on it, so I know that the commission was advised of it, of the decision. Why do we break these ordinances? I mean, what are they made for? That's, so I'm going to stop right there on that. Now then, Scott, you know, I gave you a vehicle license number about three months ago that's been out on the street for seven years, what has been done about that?
Mr. Kayler, I can get with you, I can, you know, have another discussion with you, I would tell the commission that, you know, I spent considerable time talking to Mr. Kayler, he's got ongoing issues, similar to what we had talked about before, nuisance type of issues and we just, you know, kind of had a discussion here and agreed, it's kind of a symptom of economic downturn in Ratone, but I don't know that the commission wants me to enter, engage in a back and forth discussion, I think this is a chance for you to make your point to the commission, I don't really feel like I'm going to enter into a debate with you back and forth, so I'd just say, this is your chance to, to give your points to the commission.
I think that it should be taken care of, you know, there's an organization in town that has gone out and tried to clean up different areas and then here comes all that junk right down there downtown, I just don't believe that should happen and especially when it could be just taken around the corner and back of the building.
Well, Mr. Kayler, we can look into the ordinance and see exactly what it states as it applies to a business and how they can display their things and then we can act accordingly to that.
I didn't hear.
We can look in to see what the ordinance says about what a business can and cannot do and we can act according to that, we'll, we'll investigate that and see if there's anything that we can sink our teeth into in regards to that.
Well, that would probably come under the unsheltered junk area.
I'd have to look into it, sir.
Okay, I'd appreciate it and I'd like to have you get back with me somewhere. What about that car on Sugar Ridge, Scott?
I'll, I'll take a look at it.
I thought she was going to do that three months ago.
Yeah, again, I think this is a chance for you to address the commission, make your points, I'm not going to engage in a debate with you, Mr. Kayler, but as always, my door is open, available to you, you know, I'm willing to accept your input, just not engage in a debate in a, in a business meeting of the city commission, I don't think that's what they want me to do.
Okay, because I can't understand why that vehicle has been there for 11, or for seven years, it's got a 2011 tag on it.
We'll take a look, Mr. Kayler, I appreciate your comments. Anyone else wish to address the commission this evening? Seeing done, we'll move into the business portion of the meeting. Item six, A, approval of the August 14th, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes and the September 4th, 2018 special meeting minutes. Commissioners, you've all had the minutes in your packet, you had a chance to review them, would entertain a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
So moved, I found nothing in the minutes that needed to be altered, so I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll take it. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as stated, is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same vote, motion carries, thank you. Item B, deliberate and act on event, Ratone PBW and Colonnus walk run for domestic violence awareness, October 6th, 2018, those letters are confusing me. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is a, a walk and I believe you can run for distances of one mile, three miles or five miles proposed by the group and it's been reviewed by our staff and approved, it's an event that's happened in previous years, you see a map of the proposed routes in your packet, there, there are no road closures involved and our recommendations for approval of the events.
Mayor Sagata, I was waiting to see and we got it this evening, this certificate of liability that came to us today.
Yep.
So I think it's all in order and I make a motion to approve it.
I'll take it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the event, is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries, thank you. You got off easy, Paula.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
You bet. Item C, public hearing on ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a credit agreement and note, by and between the City of Ratone, New Mexico and CoBank, ACB, in an amount not to exceed $1,754,000 for improvement to the city's joint utility system and paying the cost of delivery of the credit agreement. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is an issue that we've talked about numerous times since March related to the proposed improvements of the water treatment plant here in Ratone. We do have Mr. Campbell on hand to answer any questions you may have, this is related specifically to the interim financing, that's a peculiar instrument that's required by USDA for this type of loan grant funding situation and I think we're getting close to completion on this, we've, we've met here numerous times and taken numerous actions over the months, but I think we're approaching the end, I think that this particular item will run until October and requires enactment of an ordinance, but I'll let Mr. Campbell talk about it in more detail.
This has been a lengthy process, this is going toward our water treatment plant project, which we started probably two years ago and we actually, it's with USDA, the way it is now set up is it is interim financing on the loan portion only, we still have the grant component which will go with this $1,750,000, which is $800,000 in grant for the complete project, the interim financing will be as it states in here, at a variable rate, interest rate, but only for the term of the construction project, similar to any other construction loan, but what we will only pay on this is the interest during this period of time, then it, we will actually have a closing with the mayor signing these documents and then there'll be a closing by our commitment from USDA at the end of the project, which will be our bonding ordinance, which the commission saw probably six months ago or longer, toward both these documents will move forward, this project is out to bid currently, to where we would anticipate by the end of this month opening bids, we had a pre-bid meeting Friday with several contractors there, to where we've got quite a few that are looking at it, to where this is the next step to move this forward.
All right, and this is the public hearing portion of this process, so anyone wishing to address Mr. Campbell or the commission, Mr. Berry about this ordinance, may do so at this time? Any questions for Mr. Campbell at this time?
Not at all.
I think you stated it before, but the length of the project would be what?
We're actually anticipating it would be approximately one year of construction, we have a goal of actually, after we get to bid and work with the contractors, we would like to see substantial completion of this project by January 1st of 2020, part of that will actually be when construction begins, but this actually, this interim financing is two years with an option for one year if needed be, but this project is, the documents is set up as one year of a construction. Part of that would also, of course, be affected also by weather because part of this is affecting some of the outside areas of the plant and the difficult part with that is it does have to take place in the fall, winter or springtime because a lot of this will have to take place when we're at our reduced flows on some of the, to bring part of our operation, essentially like on the basin, to run on half a basin because we, the one difficult part always on a construction project in the water treatment plant is we have to maintain making water throughout the construction project.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Any other questions, your comments from Mr. Campbell? And I would move to item D, deliberate and act on ordinance, ordinance 998, authorizing the execution and delivery of a credit agreement and note, by and between the City of Ratone, New Mexico and CoBank, ACB, in an amount not to exceed $1,754,000 for improvements to the city's joint utility system and paying the cost of delivery of the credit agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance, is there any further discussion? Michael Land, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Thank you. Never mind, I was going to ask a question, but never mind, motion carries, thank you. It's been a long process, Dan, I couldn't believe it was actually over there, so, you know. Item E, deliberate and act on AIP grant agreement between the City of Ratone and FAA for Taxiway A Phase II project, Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commissioner, another project that we have talked about for an extensive period of time, AIP stands for the Airport Improvement Program, that's a funding program through federal aviation and the federal government that generally requires a 5% local match for a project that would improve the airport, 5% generally comes from the state and then 90% comes from FAA through this AIP program and if you remember, we talked about Phase II of Taxiway Alpha reconstruction, Phase I was completed last fall, in Phase II we had a federal entitlement, an FAA entitlement of $750,000 and through the way this program works, we ask for bids prior to getting to the FAA grant, so the bids came in quite a bit higher than the available funds, I went back to FAA and applied for all of the additional money and FAA agreed to fund the project in full, so under Phase II of Taxiway Alpha, we would complete the reconstruction of Taxiway Alpha and not have to come back for an additional Phase III. So, in your packets you see a grant agreement, that's sent to us from Federal Aviation Administration to the City of Ratone, we would have a separate grant agreement for state aviation funding and you see my application in the back and then in the middle you see a lot of assurances that are required for federal money, just to kind of give you the numbers, in total the project will be $1,319,024. $1,319,024 and some change. That means that our, we would be committing by approving the grant agreement to a match at a minimum of $65,951 and some change. That also is the amount of the state aviation contribution, and FAA will fund the project in the amount of $1,187,000, $187,122.46. That is basically what you would be agreeing to upon approval of the grant agreement. Now, we do have the city attorney present, close by. He has reviewed the agreement. He made a couple of comments to me, and I'm gonna point those out to you just real quick, in the interest of being complete, and let me look for those real quick.
Sure.
That's what is on page 21. So on page 21, section 27, subsection B, it reads, "The total number of movements counted each landing as movement of government aircraft is 300 or more, or the gross cumulative weight of government aircraft using the airport," and then in parentheses, it says, "the total movement of government aircraft multiplied." And what we're talking about here is that you would agree that there will be no charge for government aircraft unless there's just a very heavy volume of those, which, under A and B, we don't have very large aircraft, and we don't have 300 operations. So we would agree that we would not charge the federal government for government operations, which has been standard at Raton Municipal Airport, or at General Aviation Airport. We really don't, the, the only charge that people have would be to purchase fuel, or not to the City of Raton, but if they hanged an aircraft and, and it made a deal with a private hangar owner, there may be a, a charge for that, but not to the City of Raton. So what the city attorney pointed out is that that last sentence that's in parentheses is probably not, doesn't make a lot of sense. And we're not really sure what they're saying there, and it probably should be revised, but I'm not really sure what it should say. Bottom line is, it's, we agree we're not gonna charge the government for government aircraft operations. Okay, and then going to page 26, and I'm looking at section 38. It talks about hangar construction, and it says that, and, and by the way, federal aviation at a, an airport like this, it's funded with AIP funds, they do exercise a significant amount of control as to what goes on at the airport. So here, they're talking about what happens with a deal when hangars are constructed, and it says if the airport owner or operator and a person who owns aircraft agree that a hangar is to be constructed at the airport for the aircraft, at the aircraft owner's expense, then the airport owner or operator will grant to the aircraft owner for the hangar a long-term lease that is subject to such terms and conditions on the hangar as the airport owner or operator may impose. And I would tell you that every hangar that we have out there is owned by a private party, and it houses a private aircraft, and it's sitting on city-owned property, and we have a 50-year lease for every one of those. So that has passed this test of being a, a long-term lease. It's agreeable to state aviation and the federal aviation, and we've done that for a number of hangars. Now, the city attorney, I think Ray, and if you wanna address this, I think would tell you that you probably need to be careful about entering into those long-term leases. Typically, any kind of agreement that the city would make would not exceed four years. We do have a few long-term agreements out there, but really, there has to be a special circumstance for that, and I don't know, Ray, do you care to address this? So we have some existing ones. That's what you would be agreeing to with this, under this grant agreement, and generally, when we accept this type of funding, FAA will exert a considerable amount of control over the airport. So they'll send a, an inspector out periodically, inspect the airport, show things that, that need to be corrected, and they have done that really all along. Historically, that has happened, and I don't think we have really any major issues with FAA. This payment deterioration is probably the biggest thing that we have. So I can answer any questions that you might have from there.
Any questions for Mr. Barry?
I'll make a motion to approve AIP grant agreement between the City of Raton and FAA for the Taxiway Alpha Phase II project.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the City of Raton and the FAA.
By the way, Mayor, two things. Our match would come from general funds. That's is something that we anticipated and is budgeted. And then, secondly, if you could include in your motion, we would request that you authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreement and other project documents.
In my motion, I...
Yeah, you're going to allow Scott to...
...the city manager Scott Berry to act as agent.
Commissioner Chatterley, did you catch that?
Yes, I did. I second that.
So we are going to, we have a motion and a second to accept the agreement between the City of Raton and the FAA with the stipulation that Mr. Barry acts as a signatory for all contracts. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Michael Ann, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Item F, deliberate and act on acceptance of DFA fiscal year 19 final budget approval. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commission, we're talking about the 2018-2019 budget, which we commenced into in July 1st, and as we started talking about that in about March. Again, a lengthy process, but you have a letter in your packet from the local government division of Department of Finance Administration, and it says that the local government division certifies your entity's final fiscal year 18-19 budget. You also would find a similar letter for Raton Water Works, and so that's good. So I think the action here is that you then would take an action on acceptance of that. Maybe you could detail out.
We also received the RPS letter today as well, so I provided you with a copy of that.
So, Michael Ann, the action would be the, the commissioner votes then to approve the...
Yes, the letter from DFA stipulates that the budgets approved by the local government division are required to be made a part of our minutes, so we're just putting this as an action item that we're accepting the FY19 budget as approved by the local government division.
And I would just like to point out also that they did catch that we are dipping into general fund a little bit.
They did, and they did put that cautionary note on our interim budget approval of that we are spending, depleting our general fund cash balance by 8.4%. And then they also do make note that the statute does provide that the approved budget is binding on local officials and governing authorities, and that any official or governing authority approving claims or paying warrants in excess of the approved budget or available funds will be liable for the excess amount. So I believe that my staff and our department heads, we all try to do a good job monitoring the budget, making sure that we're not overspending in any specific fund or line items, and we'll continue to do so this year.
Yeah, I think your staff does an outstanding job, Michael Ann, so.
And Mayor, I would add on the next item, we'll talk about the current financial report, but it's typical that once a month, we would bring a, a budget resolution to the commission where we'll make certain adjustments through the year as, as things change or things happen that were not foreseen. And in that, in the process of talking about the financial report, we track both the revenues for comparison to the budget and our actual expenses, expenses and expenditures compared to what's budgeted.
Absolutely. Are there any further questions for Michael Ann or Mr. Barry?
I have none.
Entertain a motion to accept...
I'll make a motion to accept it, for acceptance of the DFA FY19 fiscal budget approval.
I'll second that.
I was, I was gonna...
We have a motion and a second to accept the fiscal year 19 final budget approval. Is there any further discussion?
One thing.
Okay.
All, all three of the financial in the water department, the City of Raton, and the RPS have done an outstanding job in making sure, and we're very proud of how you do it, Michael Ann and your crew.
Absolutely. Pass it on to Geneva, and same over in RPS, Mr. Barry. Appreciate their, their hard work. Any other discussion? At this time, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item G, deliberate and act on Resolution 2018-56, the July financial report for fiscal year 19. Ms. Antonucci?
Mayor and Commission, in your packet, this is the first financial report of the new fiscal year. You'll see in our general fund summary that our ending cash balance in the general fund, less our 112th reserve, is just slightly under $2 million. It's $1,995,296.48. We did point out just a few minutes ago that we did budget this year to use some of those reserves that we've been accruing the last few years, and so that is budgeted, including the matching funds on the action that you just took this evening on the airport project. That was included in our final budget. You'll see with the August gross receipts tax distribution that we just received, we still are slightly above our budgeted projection, and this would be reflective of your June, June sales for the month of August. Other than that, we didn't have a lot of grant activity in the, the month of July, but we are getting started again with some of these projects. The Public Works Department did complete the Chipso project and is getting ready to start this week, the Hospital Drive project. What else are we working on?
We, we've got, this will be the whole city manager...
Is that part of your report? Well, that's my whole way to your report. So Scott can bring you up to speed on the ongoing projects that we have. But as I've mentioned, the city's cash flow usually does start to decrease in the months of October, November, and December, as we see less construction, and then it'll stabilize in January after we receive the first half of the property tax distribution. So, so it's for that reason that we usually do delay any large budgeted expenditures until later in the year, so we'll continue that as we have in years past. Also in your packet is the gross receipts history and a copy of the complete financial report for all of the city funds.
Any questions for Ms. Antonucci?
I would just add, Commissioners, you know, it's been a pretty busy summer in town and talking to businesses. I think that, especially the highway servicing type businesses, been pretty, pretty busy, and we are reflecting, summer months, we will do that for the next report or two. But, you know, when summer's over, that nature of that changes, and we'll get a, I think, a truer picture of what the impact of, of Kmart's closing can be. And as we said, it's, it's hard to judge what that impact is, is gonna be. So we're holding up pretty well so far, and we'll get a clearer picture in probably two or three months to see overall, generally, what's, what's going on out there.
Thank you. Any other discussion for these folks?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-56, the July 30...
I'll second.
Now, you're right. We have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-56, approval of the July financial report. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item H, deliberate and act on introduction of an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the City of Raton and declaring an emergency. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commission, as time goes by, there are certain changes to the code of ordinance that are enacted. You can remember some of those ordinance changes that we've talked about through the past year, through the past couple of years, and this is a process of codifying the ordinance where we can make that available to the codes that's shown online, or to any publications of the ordinance that we have, and eliminate that confusion about, you know, what, what's in effect for, regarding solid waste. So this is an effort to, to do that codification. It's something we haven't done for a while, and we've made some changes to the ordinance. So it's something that you typically would do periodically, and it's come up on our to-do list. Michael Ann is handling this directly, and I think she can provide more detailed information or answer any questions, but we would be honest, by ordinance, and of course, this is an introduction at this meeting.
Right, as Mr. Barry stated, this is just an introduction of this ordinance. Take any comment, questions, anything that we got at this time?
Mayor and Commission, I just wanted to mention that this was somewhat long overdue. The ordinances have been updated online. You'll remember, in the past year and a half, we've adopted several ordinances, the animal ordinance, changes to the solid waste ordinance, and then there was also changes to the personnel ordinance. So these are the ordinances referenced 993 through 996. And actually, 993 was just the adoption of supplement number eight. So the other three were the animal, solid waste, and personnel ordinance. So they've been updated online. We do have the pages to insert into the books, and so once this is formally adopted, we will be codifying again probably in November, because I still need to include the two ordinances that were adopted after the election, on the two grocery receipts tax ordinances, and so I wanna get those updated as soon as possible as well. So you'll be seeing supplement number 10 here in a couple of months.
All righty. Any other questions or the comments for Michael Ann or Mr. Barry?
Not at this time.
All righty. It was brought to my attention before the meeting that item I, we need to postpone, so, no?
Did you already make a motion to introduce or...
Yeah, we did. Take action.
Oh, I didn't know we had taken action to introduce. Okay.
Thank you.
Forgive me. We need a motion to introduce the ordinance.
I'll make that vote. We'll make a motion to introduce the ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the City of Raton and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second here.
We have a motion and a second to introduce the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Thank you for that, Michael Ann. I, introductions, I thought it was just, we were talking about it.
No, that's fine. We'll advertise this for a notice of hearing and adoption for our October 9th meeting.
All righty then. Okay then, it was brought to my attention, item I, we are going to postpone at this time?
Yes, we did receive a draft ordinance, which is in your packet from the New Mexico Municipal League, but I need a little bit more time... Municipal League, but I need a little bit more time to meet with the police department, municipal court, and also discuss with our city attorney before we formally introduce this particular ordinance.
I would entertain a motion to postpone item I.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to postpone item I. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Same? Nothing. Motion carries. Alright, then, item J is the city manager's report. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, I would tell you that I had attended the New Mexico Municipal League annual conference that was held in Roswell, August 29th through 31st, as well as several of you on the commission also in attendance. I would tell the public that Mayor Segada was elected as the vice president of the New Mexico Municipal League for the upcoming year, so congratulations, Mayor Segada.
Thank you.
That's a good representation for Raton, I think, on a statewide basis. We have made preparations for a number of construction projects, I'll give you some details on that right now, on one of Raton Water Works projects, the Hart Avenue Brilliant Street water line replacement project. Actually, the contractor is on site this week and has started some preliminary activities. We would expect that he will be there for about the next 60 days. That project consists of replacing an old steel line, it's a large diameter transmission type line that's located in Brilliant from about Tiger's Drive to Hart Avenue, and then Hart Avenue to Second Street area, Loofen Jug. That will all be replaced with PVC. Over time, steel water lines suffered corrosion, and we certainly had our share of issues on this line, so a number of times, the crew gets called out, usually at a bad time, the middle of the night, for repairs on this. We've done that over and over. With this replacement of the PVC line, we should be good then for a long period of time. So that work is taking place now. That crew will patch the existing asphalt street, but we do plan on coming back in 2019 and doing more significant street improvements on that. So the consistent patching here currently, take place over the next 60 days. As Michael Ann has stated, we're ready to commence construction on the hospital drive project. We think that that contractor will be in town either later this week or at the beginning of next week. The thing I want to bring out on that is that hospital drive is really the only route into MCMC, the medical parks, some of the businesses in that area, and there is a lot of traffic on hospital drive. And with the nature of the work that we're going to do, there's certainly, it's going to be frustrating to drivers, access is going to be pretty difficult. We would ask people to really be cautious about driving in the area, and the plan generally is, we'll have one-way access in to the hospital, the medical park, and businesses at all times while we work on the other half of the street, but the egress is going to be a little more difficult, so we'll have a couple of detours, depending on the stage of the work, but when you want to get to the emergency room, you don't want to mess with the detour, you want to drive directly there. So the contractor's requirement is to maintain one-way in at all times. That's not a real large scope of work. We think we can complete it in the next 30 to 45 days, but we have 60 days of construction. But before we get in the cold weather, we'll be doing that construction and should, should complete it before snow flies, so that'll be going on. We will have the pre-construction meeting this week for the Great Blocks project, that's work on a couple of blocks on First Street. We had talked about that at our special meeting previously, and we would guess that construction will start within the next two to three weeks. That contractor will come and lay out his schedule for us at the pre-construction meeting, so I'll report back to you on that. We, as Mr. Campbell had said, we have requested bids for the filter plant improvement project. That construction could start late fall, or it could start in the winter. That's a big construction project, it's around $2.5 million, so there's not a quick timeframe on that. Because we're working on the filter plant project, it's sensitive to the demand for water in town. We have to, of course, run the filter plant the whole time that we're working on it, so don't really know what the allowable time or the, the ending time on that will be, but that'll go on for some time, pretty large project, and it's a fairly complicated project as well. So we have some bidders looking at that, and I think Dan is working with the engineers as far as the bid opening date, and I'll report back to you on that one as well. We talked about the, the airport. I would just tell you that the contractor is, the work has been awarded, contractor is ready to start. He's telling us that about the 1st of October, he'll be on that project. And there again, the goal is to complete all that work before we get into the cold weather, so it's probably about 60 days on, on that one. Myself and Mr. Campbell, we are reviewing a draft of a preliminary engineer, preliminary engineering report that was prepared for various improvements on Lake Malloya. We've talked about spillway on Lake Malloya, the installation of instrumentation, and the rehabilitation of some of the outlet works, so we're looking at that. One thing the preliminary engineering report does is is useful for us in developing a strategy to fund the construction of those projects, and again, that's probably considerable expense to, to pay for those improvements. Public Works is working on an accessibility plan for Raton, and that's leading up to a grant application under the DOT's TAP program, Transportation Alternatives program. We would anticipate submission of a grant application in November, and we are targeting the remainder, the second phase of the Great Blocks project for that, so there'd be about 60 to 65% of the projects still to be funded on that. And then lastly, Mayor and Commissioner, I would tell you that I participated in a conference call, again, with Mr. Campbell regarding nutrients at the wastewater treatment plant, specifically nitrogen and phosphorus that's discharged is a concern, and we had that conversation with the New Mexico Environment Department and consultants that are working on the project for us. We talked about the effluent limits from, that would apply to Raton, and we're really one of the first in the state that we're talking about this technology-based effluent limits and the highest attainable condition, where the ED kind of judges the community's ability to, to pay for these improvements. It's something that we've talked about for quite a while. Ultimately, it'll be, it'll contain limits that are written into our discharge permits, and there's a negotiation about what those limits are, when that's written into the permit, and what that means to Raton citizens, but I will tell you that there, it's going to happen eventually, and there'll be considerable expense to the ratepayers of Raton when that does happen. I can tell you that Mr. Campbell has spent a lot of time on this over a number of years, and really done a great job as far as trying to protect the, the Raton ratepayers, but it's an inevitable thing that we're facing, and we're trying to make our best common sense deal with the environment department now. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Any questions or that for Mr. Berry?
I have one question.
Okay.
I didn't know if there was any update about the replacement for Tri County. I didn't really have any information on that recently, and I wondered if Mr. Berry might have anything.
Mike, new Commissioner, what I understand currently is that Baydale Soul is providing those services that were previously provided by Tri County. They're doing that at the building by the, on Tiger Drive, by the high school, the Baydale Soul building, that used to be the Soy building, and a lot of the Tri County staff has joined them there. So I understand that they're providing those services currently, clients have transitioned over to that. Of course, there's been a few bumps in the road with that transition. It's not completely smooth, but I think everybody's feeling that, number one, the services are, are provided here in town. Because of the, some of the characteristics we have, we're really ahead of, of either Taos County or Union County in, in meeting that demand. I think they, they have more extensive problems than we do, but even though there's been kind of a, you know, some issues with the transition, the transition's been made, and Baydale Soul is, is the provider now.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Any other questions, comments? Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 10-5-1H7, threatened or pending litigation, specifically, threatened litigation, City of Raton versus Travel Motel for collection of lodgers' tax and landfill lawsuit, Mark Van Buskerk and Lori Van Buskerk versus the City of Raton, case number D809CB2013-00245.
And Mayor and Commissioner, if I could say that we are not prepared to talk about the Mark and Lori Van Buskerk issue, we do not anticipate talking about that in the closed session.
So we will be going to a closed session concerning the City of Raton and Travel Motel for collection of lodger's tax.
I got motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to go into closed executive session. Michael Ann, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mayor Segada?
Yes, we are in closed session. Thank you.